I would say at this point in time, we feel pretty confident in making a better case than we did last time, but I don't know if we feel confident enough that we'd rather, I think we'd rather postpone until the next meeting.
Okay. Ashley, can you hear us? Can you hear her?
I can't hear her.
Hear me now?
Yeah.
You now?
Okay. Yes, we want to go forward.
Alrighty. At this time, we will continue application number 959 from 13 River Drive, Gales Ferry, until next month. I'm sorry about that, Dave.
That's okay. I really appreciate it.
All right, we'll see you next month.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. We will now cover application 961, 108 Meeting House Lane, Lexington, Connecticut. I will read the application. Application submitted 7/16/20. These paint, cam zone, no. Cam review, no. Cam review included, no. It's not within 500 feet of another municipal boundary or government agency. It is not a reverse look at Z E O. It is a request for his variance, a non-conforming setback. The owner is Sean Ferris, phone number 860-961-6491, 108 Meeting House Lane, zoning district R20. The applicant has their email address, which I'm not going to state. Address of the premises, 108 Meeting House Lane. Assessor's map is number 108. Variance is the following sections of the zoning regulations. Section 3.4 Bulk Requirements: Reduction of 35-foot setback by 26.1 feet. Purpose of this variance is to install a shed to avoid possessions being in plain sight. What is the orientation of the proposal on the property? Shed to be installed half on the driveway and lawn. What is the hardship? Shape of the lot and elevation? What is unique about the hardship? In order to comply with regulations, the shed would need to be in the middle of the lot. How would granting this appeal affect the character of the neighborhood? And it will allow possessions to be covered and out of sight from passersbyers. The next project is the 108 Meeting House Lane Property Summary Sheet. The next step, next thing is a photo showing all the personal property that's left in the driveway and in the yard and everything else like that out in plain sight. And the next one after that is another view of the same thing from a different location. Next page. To whom it is may concern. My name is Sharon Ferris and I live at 108 Meeting House Lane. This is in a letter in an attempt to acquire a variance to build a shed due to the shape and small size of our lot. The location of the proposed shed would encroach beyond setback limits as we have a corner lot that sits on Meeting House Lane and Country Club Road. Proposed site would be over 35 feet from Meeting House Lane, but only 16 feet from Country Club Lane. It will be located inside our existing fence and retained more. In order to comply with zoning regulations, I would have to install the shed in the middle of my backyard, which is not ideal. The shed will be used for tool storage as a carpenter. I have acquired many tools over the years and use a different assortment daily. There have been many break-ins in the neighborhood and I have been forced to leave tools and material outside in my truck, leaving them susceptible to theft and an eyesore. I would appreciate your consideration for those variance to assist me in making my property safer and more presentable to surrounding neighbors. Thank you. And the back of that is dated June 17th. As neighbors of Sean Ferris and Ashley Wells at 108 Meeting House Lane in Lexington, Connecticut, have no objection to them building a 12 by 16 shed on their property at the location proposed on assessor's map. Signed by Elizabeth Schulvo at 110 Meeting House Lane and a Thomas Stowe at 4 Country Club Drive. And I can't make out the next name. Looks like a Neil Lorham or something like that at 5 Country Club Drive. The next piece of paper is a hand-drawn layout of the house where the shed was going to, where the shed would go, and it gives you dimensions. The house is 35 feet from Country Club Road. The shed's going to be, it's like nine feet from the, it's like nine feet to the fence.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Kyle Fleece, zoning official.
Yes.
Please reference the professionally-prepared site plan. It has the actual measurements. This hand-drawn plan was done before they had a land surveyor do an actual site plan.
Alrighty. Well, going to the Deacon and Gardener's site plan, the proposed shed would be 8.9 feet from the property line and six feet from the house. And it looks like it's, yeah, inside the chain link fence. Okay. Another page in the application is tough shed, and it shows you the 12-foot by 16-foot shed that they want to put up. The next page, assessor's map for 108 Meeting House Lane. And then you have a overall view of what 108 Meeting House Lane looks like between Meeting House Lane and Country Club Drive, and the lot is .23 acres. And it is a corner lot. And then the last item in the package is the posting for the advertisement of the meeting in Connecticut. All right. Ashley Wells or Mr. Sean Ferris?
Yes.
Identify yourself and let us know what the problem is.
Yeah, I'm Sean Ferris. Live at 108 Meeting House Lane. And so being that, you know, we have to be 35 feet from the property line, it doesn't leave much area. And the area that it came out, they gave us a location where we could put it, and it's in the middle of our yard, and our yard slopes down towards the east. And with that size shed, you know, we'd have to put it on kind of stilts up the back, you know, towards the west end, towards the, you know, our budding neighbors. It just wasn't a good spot. You know, the, we wanted to put it right, you know, as we proposed, you know, it's a good area. We plan on putting a six-foot vinyl fence, you know, where the existing fence is. And, you know, you won't see much of it, you know, if you're coming up Country Club. And when you're coming up Meeting House or down Meeting House, the way it's oriented, you know, it won't be out of spirit with the neighborhood. You just don't see much of it. You know, I have, I looked around the neighborhood and there's not too many. I've only seen two that are on corner lots. And it's, you know, it's basically just to keep my tools. It's not going to have electricity. You know, there's been a couple of break-ins. Not to say it's a bad neighborhood, but, you know, it's just, I'd rather have the stuff locked inside this shed. And, you know, we just had, we just had police here because of, you know, stuff taken out of the yard. So it's, just kind of wanted something to keep my possessions inside of and, you know, keep them out of the, out of sight, I guess.
Mr., yeah, Keith, I think, is it?
Ferris.
Say it again?
Ferris.
No, no, I'm talking, our zoning official.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm here, Mr. Chairman.
Kyle?
What's your first name?
Kyle.
Kyle, there we go. I'm sorry, Kyle.
All right.
You went out and you looked at the house and you looked at the property? And you had him, I guess you were the one that suggested that they get this official survey done?
Yeah, just with the town right of way and this older subdivision, you know, you can't tell exactly where it is based off of an assessor's map. So that's why we really needed them to get an actual plan done, which clearly locates it right away and specifies the amount of the variance that they would need.
Okay. All right. Are there any board members that have questions? Eric?
Thank you. The existing shed that's in the southeast corner of the existing house, the, I was wondering why the new shed cannot replace that existing shed and then move that smaller existing shed someplace where it complies with zoning. It looks, once you get past that rear building line, you only have, you can be as close as six feet to that eastern lot line, and it looks like that proposed shed would fit nicely right in that corner. So I was just wondering what the applicant's thoughts were on that.
In the corner, basically putting the new proposed shed where the old shed is and then moving existing?
Either replacing it or putting it so that it, basically, the, it abuts, you might have to turn the existing shed 180 degrees so the doors face north, and then put the new shed so that the back wall abuts the wall on the south, what would then become the south wall of the existing shed.
Well, the reason I proposed in the driveway, just easier, I mean, I know it's not a great reason, but it's, you know, you back up the truck and it's, you know, off with one day's tools and in with the next day. So basically, it's like, I'd have to go through, all through my backyard and around, and like I said, it slopes down towards the, from, well, it's west to east. And it's just hard, it's hard getting around there. The old shed wouldn't make a move, that's for sure. It would basically just have to get torn down. Yeah, and it's, it's just basically to be close to the driveway, you know, in and out with stuff. We can still access the yard, you know, from the shed or the front, you know, where the driveway is.
Thank you.
Kyle, can you give me, can you give us a rough idea of what the slope is in their backyard?
I can't really, you know, give you a concrete argument. You know, I'm not qualified to do something like that, but it definitely does slope off to that side of the property line. Whether it's buildable or not, that's truly out of my expertise.
Well, does it, does it slope off dramatically or is it just, you know, a couple of inches every couple of feet? Or is it more like, you know, it drops down a foot or two after six feet?
Yeah, I mean, like I said, it's really hard for me to say. I don't really have a picture of that side of the property. I know, you know, in the real, it does slope down, maybe the property ornican, that's why more.
All right. Sean, can you give me a rough idea?
I'd say from one side of my property to the other, I'd say eight to 10 feet. So in the six, the 16 or 12 feet, I'd say it's like a, probably three feet, I'd have to have one side up in the air, basically.
All right, that gives us an idea. All right. Anybody else have any questions? Charlie, can you hear us?
I'm all set. I have any questions.
Okay. Rich?
I guess I'm okay. We, you wouldn't want to put it in the front yard, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm okay. I'm all set. Thank you.
Alrighty. Sean, is there anything else I'd like to say before I decide to close the meeting?
Uh, no, I think it's covered it all.
Alrighty. Then I hereby close the public hearing on application 961. Alrighty. Next thing on the application, or next thing on our agenda, is approval of the meeting, approval of meeting minutes. Wait a minute.
No, it would be the action of an applicant.
Yeah, yeah, we got to adjourn, okay? Excuse me. We're journeying the public hearing. Now we're going to open up the regular meeting. Just to let you, Sean, and your wife know, at this point, we cannot accept any more information from you or her as far as the regular meeting and your application goes, okay?
Okay.
All righty. So I'm going to call the regular meeting to order for Wednesday, August 19th, 2020. Deborah, if you do the vote call.
Tony Capon, absent. Sharon Peeler, absent. Charles Preby?
Charles?
I'm here.
John Proctor?
Here.
Eric Treister?
Here.
Marie Pedro? Rich Murphy?
And Kyle, the zoning official.
Kyle, please.
Right. Okay, all members present are voting members. Application 959 is continued till next month. We have application 961, 108 Meeting House Lane, looking for a variance of 26.1 feet of the required 35-foot setback for a shed. Do I hear a motion?
I'll move to approve the application.
Motion's been made to approve application.
I'll second the motion.
961, Charlie Preby, second the motion. It's open for discussion. Anybody have any comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman?
Eric?
Am I on?
Yes, you're on.
I have, I have two concerns about this application. This is a corner lot, which means it has two front yards. The 35-foot setback from the front property line is also applicable to the, to the north and also to the, to the west. So if we approve this application, we're effectively putting a, a building fairly very close to the property, which is supposed to be part of the, one of the front yards. In our, in our training, one of the, one of the things that we learned is that, quote, "A peculiar characteristic of the property that has made it difficult for a particular use to comply with the zoning regulations does not justify the grant of a variance without a showing that it cannot reasonably be developed or for another permitted use or that compliance with the regulations will be confiscatory or arbitrary." In my opinion, if we deny this application, it may not be confiscatory or arbitrary. And so I, that's one of the challenges. The other requirement is that the proposed change is generally consistent with the overall scheme of zoning, and the overall scheme of zoning calls for keeping the front yards, even the corner lots, free of structures, of both the permanent structure, the house maintenance structure, as well as the other features. My third concern is that it appears that the applicant could comply with the zoning regulations by putting the shed either directly, directly south of the existing shed, and he would be within six feet of the, and once you're behind that corner line, you can be as close as six feet to the, to the common lot line. And I, he did not show that that was impossible. Even if there is a slope of three feet, if you bring in some fill, or, you know, three feet's not that much over, and you can put it up on concrete blocks, it can be done, and then there would be full zoning compliance. So I don't see a real hardship. It's inconsistent with the overall scheme of zoning, and I don't, I'm generally opposed. I don't, I don't think, I don't think we should support this. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Kyle Fleece, if I may.
Go ahead. It's seven o'clock.
I would just like to know, this is a corner lot, so it has two side yards, no rear yard. Therefore, it would have to comply with a side yard setback, not the rear yard. The minimum side yard setback in that zone is 12 feet, not the six feet that Mr. Treister stated.
Kyle, the, I respectfully have to disagree with you on the, on the, once you get the, that is true on the, on the west side of the home, I agree with you. But on the east side of the home, that is just another lot line, just like any other lot line on a street. And once you get behind the rear building line, that's a rear yard, and you can be six feet away from that common, that common lot line. And if you go to the, if you go to page, hold on just for a second. If you go to section 8.2E of our zoning regulations, it excess, it shows that, and this is 8.2E is where it's located on all different types of lots, and it says, "No accessory building located in a rear yard shall be closer to a lot line than six feet." So, so I could be wrong, you know, I've been wrong before sometimes, but the, once you get behind that southeast corner of the home, that is a rear yard, and you can get to within six feet of that, of that property line, in my opinion.
All right. I noticed Tony Capone is here.
My apologies for being late, but yes, I am here.
All right, Tony, did you, were you listening to us when we, the public hearing?
No, no, I was not. I was late.
All right, then you can't vote on this application, anyway.
No, I wouldn't be voting anyway, to an alternate.
I know. Okay. First off, Eric, this is not, the gentleman's trying to put in a shed or 16 by, 12 by 16 shed where he can drive up and get his tools and put his tools away, this, that, and whatever. Putting that shed where he has to drive through his front yard and whatever, I personally think is wrong. The only, the only variance that we would be granting with this is for the, from the shed to the Country Club Lane. Has nothing to do with 35 feet from the front yard because he's from the front line, because he's way more than that awake. He's not asking for a variance for that. Okay?
Back.
All right, anybody else have any questions?
Just a comment, I think. I think Eric has, has made some valid points, and I, I don't know, seems to me you could put the shed in the backyard somewhere. Close this vote, I know it's hard. It's, it's, it's hard, but I don't think it's a hardship, you know, in this, in the So I'm, I don't know, I guess I'm thinking that, probably, I think that Eric has, has some good points and that we should consider those.
Well, I'm not arguing that. The only thing is that I'm looking at this, this is more like a garage for the guy to drive up and be able to put his stuff away, and then get his stuff out the next morning when he's got to go, not drive through his backyard and everything else like this.
Even if it was a garage, it would still be a variance.
Huh?
Even if it was a garage, it would still require a variance.
I understand that. Anyway, that's my opinion. Eric's got his, Rich's got his. Charlie, you have nothing else to say?
I, I hear what the gentlemen are saying, and it sounds like if we did a roll call vote, one of the two gentlemen would be voting no, at least. So, I mean, do we want to do that, John? It's, it just only takes one no, it doesn't, doesn't take any more. Can you hear me?
You talking to me?
Can you hear me?
Charlie, I can hear you. Are you talking to me or are you talking to Sean?
I was talking to the...
Well, really, he can't, he can't have any input into this.
I'm talking to the board, John.
Okay, the board. In other words, Charlie, you're proposing we put this motion on hold? I don't know if we can do that or not.
No, I'm not, I'm not proposing that. It's, it's, it sounds like there already may be no votes in the, in the group, so, and it only takes one. Only one person has to say no, and this is, this is, is not approved. Eric, Eric, Rich, are you, you guys are, you guys are declining on this variance? Is that what I'm understanding? Since it only takes a one no vote, I mean, I think we have it, John, the decision's made.
Yeah, I have to agree with you. All right, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna do a roll call for this. All those in favor, Deborah, do a roll call and give a vote, yes or no.
Tony Capon?
I can't vote.
Sharon Peeler? Charles Preby?
I vote to approve the variance.
John Proctor?
I vote to approve the variance.
Eric Treister?
No.
Marie Pedro's absent. Rich Murphy?
No.
And the zoning official has no vote. All right, so, application 961, 108 Meeting House Lane is disapproved. Mr. Sean and Ashley, I am very sorry, but your application has been denied.
Right, thank you.
Kyle, if you would get together with them and discuss the ramifications and what they can do, I'd appreciate it.
We can work with them, try to find a spot that can find the works.
Thank you, Kyle. Okay, the next item on the agenda is approval of the public hearing and meeting minutes from July 15th, 2020. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Make the motion to approve the meeting.
Motion's been made to approve, a second?
I'll second.
It's seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Eric?
I can, I have to decline. I have not read the minutes.
Alright. Sharon, you're finally here.
We haven't found the dog. We, just a dog. It took off tonight.
I'm there.
Oh, jeez.
Alright, Sharon.
Yeah, welcome.
Good, good luck.
Alright, a public hearing and regular meeting minutes for July 15th are approved. We have new business. Motion to recommend Town Council adopt proposed amendments to ordinance 300-011 and ordinance provided for the term of office and method of election or appointment of Zoning Board of Appeals and establishing a fee schedule for the town of Ledge and the proposed appendix schedule as contained in the draft dated 2020. Everybody have the draft?
No.
I, I
Online and Reddit.
I am too.
This is the draft of the meeting minute, I think, the application, and they're already using this uh, for fees for application.
Mister Chairman, if you'd like, I can quickly go over it for those that haven't read it.
Say again?
I can quickly go over these changes if you'd like, um, for those that haven't read it, but it is uploaded on the agenda, um, clickable link, you can open that up.
Deborah, just open it up.
I'm going to try to enlarge it.
It basically boils down to everything that we've done before, but it's zoning board of appeals fees, variance is $100. Appeal the decision, Z, Z E O is 500. Certification of local, of location approval for D M V, public hearings, $500. Certification of local appro, location approvals for D M V without public hearings is $100. And then that's what they're asking us to approve. It's got, it's got all this stuff, 8.1 type, how the town can make, set up the zoning people's fees and so forth and so on. It's all stuff that's covered in the state statutes. Well, all they're looking for is for the zoning board of appeals uh, to give our approval.
Mister Chairman?
Yes?
Just a, just a question, we you know, the $500 fee seems, seems high to me and I'm just going, I know it's mostly publication fees for, for the day. Uh, has there been any discussion on the Town Council about, um, alternate ways of publishing our public hearings rather than going through the day?
Well, unfortunately, I think they have discussed it. And my understanding is it's got to be published today. You just can't put it on a website.
Yeah, that would be the, the obvious alternative, yeah.
Mister Chairman, if I may.
Go ahead.
So the current state statutes do require that we run, you know, the advertisements in a paper having, you know, circulation, um. During this whole COVID crisis, they had some allowances to post them on the town website, um, but officially still you need to run the, the ad in the newspaper. Um, so it's possible in the future that may change, but currently the state statute does require it, um, and that's what most of that $500 covers, those publication fees.
Yeah, okay. That answer your question, Rich?
Well, yeah, sadly, yes, it was. It's a shame, somebody that comes in like our, like the last application, that, you know, $500, that's a lot of money out of somebody's pocket. Um, just to get a yes or a no out of us.
And, and, and he, he spent money on that, uh, survey too, and that was hundreds.
Sure, yeah.
But the, the, the political, the political action lobbies for the news that, um, pressured state legislature to keep it a law, that these need to be published, so.
Okay, so we should all write to our state representative.
Yeah, it wouldn't hurt. Alright, so the motion's been made to approve this zoning board of appeals fee schedule and so forth. And it's been seconded. Are you in favor, Rich?
Sorry?
Are you in favor of the?
I, I have a question.
Yes.
Charlie, are you in favor?
I, I am in favor.
Eric?
I have a question of Kyle, real quick. Um, well, how do these fees compare with the zoning permit fees? I mean, the, uh, the variance fees, applicant, the, the, the public hearing fees for, for zone, P and Z.
I don't have the variance in front of me. Um, I believe they are about the same, if not the same, um, and like I said, they're, they're just based off publication costs mostly.
Okay, the, the, uh, uh, I know that for the zoning, uh, the, the zoning things, is, is there a $60 state fee of some type for P and Z?
Correct, um, and the $60 state fee would be included in, in addition to these fees as well.
Ah, okay, so that's not embedded in this $500, is that correct?
It's not, Eric.
Um, that is noted on the application form.
Okay, thank you. Uh, uh, I vote in favor of the, uh, of the proposed fee schedule.
Okay, uh, Tony or Sharon? Tony, no?
Uh, again, I can't, I'm an alternate, so I can't vote.
On this, you can make a, you can make a decision.
Oh, okay, yes.
You, you agree with this fee schedule?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay, I agree. That's one, two, three, four, that's five, yeses. The motion's been made to approve the zoning board of appeals fee schedule as presented. Alrighty. Uh, let's see here, do you have any more old business? Nope. Alright, gentlemen, I'm going to ask you, uh, please put this on your list. We have to take care of, uh, applications. What is it? 959 next month. Can't afford not to have it. And everybody, I would appreciate it if you could try and log in at about 6:15 or 6:20, so we make sure everybody's here first. Eric, I didn't hear you.
Uh, Mister, Mister Chairman, the, um, we, we may want to have Deb or Kyle check the, uh, check the statutes to make sure that our, our time limits are not expiring for, for making a decision on this application. If, if I remember correctly, I think there's a 65-day window or something, but I, I don't remember for sure, so it's worth checking. We may have to call a special meeting to stay within that, that time window, so just a heads up. I could be wrong.
Alright, Kyle?
Yep, I will look into that first thing tomorrow morning.
I appreciate it. I appreciate everybody's assist efforts to be here tonight. I want to thank you all again for serving on the board. You guys stay hell, stay safe.
Once again, my apologies for not being here. Comcast has been doing intermittent repairs since the storm went out and they decided about 6 o'clock to knock a camp Comcast down. It's gone to about 10 minutes of seven.
Alright, that's a problem. Alright, all those in favor of adjourning the meeting, say aye. Alright, alright, meeting's adjourned.
So everybody later.
Thank you, Deb.
Thank you.